Yes, Paul.
10 o'clock, we could begin public comment again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next?
Yes.
Who's up?
Here, go ahead.
Hi, my name is.
Okay.
Yeah, my name is Erin Mandris and I, um, actually, to give you a little bit of backstory, I grew up here in West Bloomfield. What is that? Do you hear that noise? Um. Is there music?
Erin, are you playing music?
I am not, no.
Someone's unmuted, Dave, I don't know if you can.
Yeah, I just muted Erin, it's actually coming from her, so just muted her. Erin, go ahead and try to figure it out, you might be playing in a different tab someplace. I'm gonna go to our next, uh, next person.
That's fine.
How about now, does it, did it go away?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, it went away.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, my name's Erin Mandris and to give you a little bit of backstory, I grew up in West Bloomfield, I went through all of the West Bloomfield schools. Um, and I moved to Baltimore, Maryland, right out of college, I went to Michigan State, and I've lived in Baltimore for 14 years, and my husband is from Baltimore. We made a family decision for schools solely to move across country back here because Bloomfield Hills School District is, from what I've heard my whole life and up until this point, supposedly the greatest school district in the country for public schools. How about now, does it, did it go away?
Yes, it did, yeah, it went away.
Okay, sorry about that. So I, so I moved my husband across country and we moved here during the pandemic. It was to my understanding that Bloomfield Hills was to the utmost prestigious quality out there. We are so disappointed, I have two children right now in schools. I have a third grader at Lone Pine, I have a first grader who has special needs, um, is on, is on an IEP and in-person, in-person instruction is absolutely critical for him. Though Lone Pine did a fabulous job, it, there's just nothing that can compare to in-person. So my family had to make the most difficult decision, remove our son from Bloomfield Hills School District, which we just moved across country for, and put him into a private school where he has now been in-person, receiving in-person instruction. He, he's been extremely safe, not only is he safe from COVID, but he has multiple life-threatening food allergies where they've been able to manage that as well. And I, I guess what I'm asking you and what I'm telling you is here, here's a family that just moved into the area, um, because of the top-notch education that Bloomfield Hills offers. And we are basically handcuffed into having, to not even give Lone Pine Elementary the fair chance to provide those services for my son because there's no in-person, there, there's nothing that can compare to what Lone Pine can do virtually to what Eaton Academy can do in Birmingham in-person for him. He's thriving, he's doing phenomenally. I would hate to have to see more and more kids leave this school district that's nationally known for their education. And to be honest, we're now contemplating whether we should move our third grader elsewhere for next year also. And what a disappointment, I mean, here you have a family that, it, and from this area, we are so loyal to Bloomfield Hills.
Erin, will you wrap it up, please?
I hope you, I hope you consider going in-person. It is possible and it is safe. And I, I hope that I can bring my son back into the setting so that he can receive the quality instruction for which we moved here for.
Thank you, I think, I think Dave, you have like a tape the light going in the background.
No, this is our callers, you're calling in, someone's watching the stream, just about a minute, forty minutes, forty seconds behind. This is like a call-in on a radio show.
I got it.
Meredith Morris, Morris, are you there? All right, I'm gonna try. It's Lisa Lockhart. And Lisa, if you've called, just hit star six to get in. Okay. I try. Karina. Okay. Well, this will, this will be our last one here then, it'll be Mike.
Mike.
Thank you.
We can hear you, go ahead, Mike.
Good evening, members of the school board and everybody out there watching. I'm, um, I'm a little dismayed by what I've been hearing from some of the teachers and a handful of parents about, you know, insisting that we all stay home and, and keep it all shut down. I'm not sure what I'm missing, but it's my understanding there is an online-only option. So for those people who don't feel safe, who don't want to go back, who thinks that they want to stay online, then that option is there for you. Why are you trying to impose your will and your beliefs on the rest of us? We need to get on with life. You heard the gentleman who's a doctor state earlier, Corona's not going anywhere. I mean, at what, at some point, we gotta move on. I mean, it's gonna be here in the fall, it's gonna be here next year, it's gonna be here for the foreseeable future. And so the sooner we can get these kids back to school and somewhat of a normal routine again, the better for them. I have three kids in this district. And candidly, I've already moved one out starting next year. And after hearing some of the teachers today, the other two are not far behind them. You guys have unlimited resources to figure this out. This district just got millions and millions of dollars, and candidly, by misleading us and telling us that we were going back to school. And many of us voted based on that, and then of course, as soon as you got the money, oh, sorry, we're staying home. And now when other districts all around us are going back to school, when private schools have been in, back in for, you know, since December, now you're, you're still debating, you're still wondering if we're going back to school or not? Whoever doesn't want to go back, stay home and stay virtual. And let the rest of us get on with our lives. I just don't see what I'm missing. You want to talk about risks? I'll gladly risk my kid going back. As opposed to the risks that I gotta worry about him, my, my three kids staying at home and, and their mental health and their mental well-being and their, their demeanor changing? Enough's enough. This is, to me, not that difficult of a decision. Whoever wants to go back, let them go back, and whoever wants to stay home, God bless you, stay home. Leave the rest of us alone. Thank you.
Dave, anyone else?
Yeah, we have one last person, Becky Grace.
Becky.
Hi. Hopefully, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Well, first of all, I just would like to say thank you so much. I've been following along with all your hours of meetings from the summer, and I know these are really difficult decisions and I really appreciate all that you've done to keep our kids safe and provide great education. And, you know, I understand this is complicated, I'm an educator myself. We have four children, two are in the district, one is a fifth grader, and the hybrid is working out very well for her. But I know it's not the case for everyone, and all of our children are different and our concerns are, where our children are not doing well, that's our priority. And it happens to be, for me, my senior, she's doing fine, but when we talk about mental health, she really needs to be in school. And she's in difficult classes and it's hard to focus and be as attentive when you are not in-person. And I know that it's logistically not so easy with the high school, but I just want you guys to consider that as a senior, this is her end of her time in, at Bloomfield. And, you know, I think academically, it's very helpful for her to be in-person. She, as I said, she's a good student, but it's, it's now, at the time, over the months, it's been more challenging. But also socially, she is very conscious of COVID and so she doesn't really engage with her friends, like some students, which is, you know, still continue to go to parties or do things, but, um, she's really conscientious of being safe. And so school's a place where she can see friends and socialize in a safe way. And so I just think, you know, mental health is really important. And also, you know, the high school students, although it's difficult with staffing, I guess my question is, if you have a teacher in the class right now, she has some classes where only maybe three or four students come, if she had an option to go five days a week, many students would stay home because they are doing fine, they're enjoying that at-home learning. So I just think like, you might be able to have, you might be able to make it work where the students that feel like they do learn better could come five days a week. And also, I know with contract, contact tracing, it's, it's challenging, but if you were able to just have like sign-ins or understand who is exactly there, I think you could work around that too. So my plea is, for my child that is the one that is struggling more, is my high schooler. So I think if you could just consider that with all this, that high school students also benefit from being in-person too. Good luck with all this, thank you.
Dave, that closes public comment?
Yes, Paul, we have, we've got another flush, I don't know, another six or seven that's just come in, but we're not prepared to bring them in yet, um, if, I'm just letting you know, Paul. I don't know if you want to cut that off now or, or add them in.
We could, we could, if it came in after, we could close public comment, go to board business.
Okay.
All right, board business, 7A. Approval of return to five-day schedule, can I get a motion?
Um, sorry, mute problems. I move the Board of Education approve the March 15, 2021 return to school recommendation for grades K-8 as presented by the administration.
Do I have support? Civil supports, discussion? Lisa?
Howard, do you want to go first? I just want to write, organize.
Do, do we have, Paul, do we have an order for this, or?
No, this is just discussion of the motion and the second, so whoever, whoever wants to talk, we don't necessarily all have to talk. We had, you know, over an hour and a half discussion earlier. Lisa?
All right, I, what I'm saying is, Howard, do you want to go before me because I, I.
I'll talk, I'll talk. I, I just want to keep this brief, but, you know, I, I, and I don't know that I can read my own writing, but I've been taking notes. First of all, I want to thank everybody who came to give public comment. I think it is very brave and admirable to put oneself out there and it is really helpful to hear the granular details of everybody's experience when we're talking about these important decisions. It's, it's impossible, right? There's, there's bad answers everywhere you look. There's so many competing priorities and there is really nothing that the district can do that's gonna satisfy, I don't know, I'm gonna take a guess here, 60 to 65% of the people. I, I really, I can't address this right now, I really bleed for the Unified Arts Program. I just read an amazing article in some blog about how we need those courses more than anything else right now if we're going to climb out of this hole of funk that this has all put us in psychologically, especially the young people. So I, I don't have an answer for that and I would just encourage everyone in the administration to just keep having that conversation so that, so that that could be worked out. Um, and I, I hear, I hear people's, you know, legitimate fear for their physical safety. I, I hear the reluctance to change schedules that people have gotten somewhat accustomed to. I appreciate that everybody has different logistical concerns, safety concerns and risk factors. I was one of the people who voted not to start in-person learning in September because at that time, it was very fearful to me because it was unknown whether we would cause an outbreak by opening schools. We have learned a lot since that time. And what I see with my eyes, and I'm not talking about the emails I get in the last, in the two days before a board meeting, I do not get bullied by anybody. So I, I just want to put that out there. I'm talking about the things I have seen in the last 11 months and my own personal conclusion is that more of our students are miserable than are not miserable. I, I, I think it's amazing that many families have had success with the current status, but I think that is less true for more of our students than it is for fewer of our students. So, um, you know, and it, I, I have to agree with the sentiment, you know, we, this is our life right now. You can't keep pushing it back and pushing it back. If it's spring break, then we're gonna have to wait two weeks to see what happens after spring break. Is there gonna be a holiday flood? You know, the vaccine is here and our lived experience is that schools, by and large, you know, with minor exceptions, really do not cause outbreaks when sensible mitigation factors are in place, you know? And I struggle with this three-feet-six-feet thing, I'm not gonna lie. But in late September and early October, we took a small leap of faith to get our kids some face-to-face and it worked. And I think that with the vaccine here, we are in a position to take another small leap of faith, knowing that we can change course if, if we have to. You know, contagious variants are not necessarily virulent variants, you know, you, you have to, none of this is, is really known or proven yet. Any article that says vaccines don't work on the new variants, that data is skinny and it's all come from test tube experience, experiments rather, that do not mimic what goes on in the human body. So none of that is known. And, and I, I do not believe in making decisions out of, you know, theories that, that aren't true, that are, that are fearful. So, you know, that, that's what I think, I'm gonna be quiet soon. I, I am voting for this because of the words K-8. I, I am, I am frankly horrified about sending the high school kids in at this early time and I, and I do think they're bearing the brunt. And my, my suggestion, just off the cuff, is that elementary and middle both be moved back, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, whatever it takes to get the high school where it is right now and put Black Hawk Hour back in the beginning of the day. We have, you know, thank goodness we have activities, but we have fewer activities right now. And I just don't see how having the high school end, even, even at 3:00, 3:30 if we had to, is gonna be a major disruption. I, I think any family with teenagers in it right now has seen the proof of the pudding of what a huge difference it makes in their lives not to have to get up at, at 5:30 in the morning to get to school. It's just, it's just not, not, not good for them. Um, so the, these are my thoughts as I sit here and listen to everybody and I, I, Pat has done more work on this than all of us put together and I trust his recommendation and I believe it's time to take the step, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer, Howard and Lisa.
Thank you, President Cullen. And, and thank all the public commenters. I learned a lot in the last hour and a half. And I want to talk a little bit about what I've learned. Um. I'm a little frustrated initially over the fact that we're having a meeting here on the 11th of February and that the date of return is March 15th. So that's over four weeks away. So I'm not sure why it is that we've got ourselves in the situation that when it comes to the school board, there's still, and, and we even heard from the superintendent that it's gonna be another two weeks until we know all the facts of the geometry of, of the rooms. Well, this has been a year that we've had that opportunity to figure out the math in the buildings, so. But that's, that's where we are, so, you know, obviously, it's not gonna change where we're going forward here. March 15th is March 15th. But what I did hear from the BHEA leader and a lot of the other teachers is the possibility of April. Because Phil was able to tell us, uh, give us new information that we did not have as part of our discussion earlier, which is that, um, he gave us a forecast of when the teachers would be able to have their vaccinations. Which is a question I asked earlier and was not able to get information on. So he said that by the middle of April, the, the vast majority of the teachers who want the vaccines will be able to get the vaccines. That's new information, we didn't have that previously. I also looked on the calendar and between now and April 5th, which is where the consensus of the teachers were saying they'd be willing to return, is three weeks, of which five and a half days of those three weeks are spring break, where school's not in session anyway. So that really is, if we, if we push the date from March 15th to April 5th, we are losing nine and a half days of, 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 of school. So my question is to the superintendent, did you have these conversations with Phil? And did you consider March 5th as a, I'm sorry, April 5th? And if so, why was it not considered as an alternative? And if not, why was that not, if Phil gave it to us this evening, why was that not being negotiated with the teachers' union over the last, you know, before it was presented to us this evening?
All options were considered, but there's no guarantee when the vaccine rollout or increased doses will come. Is it possible that that timeline can be met? Absolutely. Can I guarantee that timeline's going to be met? No.
No, and I, and I wouldn't expect you to guarantee it, sir. But what I'm saying is if the teachers' union is comfortable with April 5th and we can't do it any earlier than March 15th, then cut the baby in two, we're just talking about nine and a half days. So I would propose an amendment to the motion and move the date from March 15th to April 5th. It gets us back in school, the same plan, but just kicking the date for three physical weeks and nine and a half days of school. All of the, at least as far as I understand, all of the issues that 80% of the public comments were telling us will vanish. And, um, we would be able to get back in school. So my.
Mr. Mayor, are you making, oh, I have.
So my amendment is just to modify the word, modify the date. And instead of March 15th, make it April 5th.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion on the amendment? Lisa?
Yep, I, I listened to all of the public comments and, you know, also very appreciative for everyone to take time and, and come speak to us. You know, I, I think that we're not that far from a compromise, a solution that everyone can live with. I, I do think that we all want kids back, I think we want them back as much in-person. It's clear that the teachers do. I do sometimes catch glimpses of classes online for my own kids and none of this would have worked without teachers and buying. I, I moved here for the schools as well and to me, you know, 20 years in, what makes the schools is the teachers. Nobody wants to go back dragging teachers who are fearful. I don't think that's a conducive environment for good education for anybody. Maybe April 5th, maybe like Howard said, we can split the difference so that we compromise. I don't think. Really what they want. I think if we, if we come back, I, I really don't care if we come back over the weekend to vote on it, take a day or two and see if we can't get these couple minor points, some consensus so that we can go back and feel good about it. I, I know that the parents speaking don't want to come back to an environment where the teachers don't want to be there because they don't feel safe. Who would? So I, I guess, you know, Howard, that, I, I think that was, I think that's a great suggestion. I would support it, flexible on the date even, maybe, um, you know, but take a day or two, let, let's Pat talk to Phil, see what, where, where there's room for compromise. Because it's so close to me right now, I don't think we're all that far apart.
Any other comments?
I, I just wanted to say that I definitely agree that the compromise is definitely necessary. The teachers are our frontline workers and so it's like, they're the ones, you know, out, you know, working face-to-face with our students who, like one parent made the comment, our youngsters are not being vaccinated. And so it's like, we want to make sure that we are doing the best for the entire district and not just a subset of the district. And that includes, you know, parents, teachers, you know, administrators, it includes all of us. And so I think a compromise of, of a week doesn't necessarily, um, I mean, it def, I'm thinking about all the points that Pat made about food insecurities and, you know, students that are not in, in spaces. But we want to also make sure we, you know, we're coming back with, with not losing more teachers, you know, because they can't get the vaccination or access to the vaccination. So I definitely could, definitely support us changing the date to April.
Pat here, Pat, I don't know, John, do you have a comment? I was gonna ask Pat his, his thoughts on this from his perspective. I know him and his team have done a lot of work, you know, when we talk compromise about this 3/15 date. I just, but, you know, John, if you want to comment, then Pat, I just want to hear your thoughts.
I just wanted to say that I, I came into tonight trying to keep an open mind, but with the thought that I was going to vote yes. As everyone knows, my wife is a teacher. I talked to her at the break at 10 o'clock, you know, 9:55 and she was like, "Let's go back, whatever, don't go back." But in listening to the other teachers, listening, I think that I would feel more comfortable if, if we waited because of the secondary factor in that we just changed to this plan and we'd be coming back after a break, coming back into April, which I know sometimes it snows in Michigan in April, but like into a warmer environment when last year in April and May, like, the, the numbers were starting to come down and, you know. I, I would feel more comfortable in making a compromise. I would, I think the teachers want, would probably want to wait until even later, but I think they'd be more comfortable if we made this compromise at that April 5th date or whatever date it is. I don't know when spring break is, but, um, my kids don't want to go back. But, um, for different reasons, my son wants to sit at home in the afternoon, goof around and my daughter has, like, she reads a lot, she's got more fear, she's older, you know? But, um, they're, you know, we teach them to be positive about, you know, what's happening in front of them and, um, like I said, I want to vote yes. I'm a little, not irritated, but it's, I don't like the, we think we. I don't like the, we think we can get to six feet, we think we can get to three feet, like, know this information, you know, that's what I think, like, let's know this, like, as far as I'm concerned. But, but I don't know, I'm for the compromise as well. I'm not saying I won't vote yes for the March date. I'm just, like, it would make me feel more comfortable about it.
Paul, can I just, I'm sorry, John?
I have a, I have a comment. I mean, Howard, I'm happy to hear, then I can make a comment.
Yeah, this real quick. So I just did the math. The nine and a half days of school between March 15th and April 5th is 5% of the, of 180 school days. So we're always, all we're talking about is a difference of 5% of a normal school year, number one. Number two, April 5th is April 5th. Unless the numbers coming from the health department take a huge spike up, the teachers have had their compromise. We're not going to push it any farther. At least I'm not. So don't come the week before April 5th and say, "Well, we haven't had enough vaccinations, and therefore we want to push it out another two or three weeks." April 5th is April 5th unless, you know, the, everything goes to hell in terms of our infection rate and things like that. That's a different story, but April 5th is a solid date.
All right. Thanks, Howard. Let me make a comment. You know, we're talking April 5th, we're talking nine days, we're talking after spring break. For some families, this has been a year. This has been a, what are we, we're talking about another two weeks out. It's been a year. I am very empathetic to, you know, the safety of our staff. I also am married to a spouse who's been going in for nine months, who's a frontline worker. These frontline workers all over the place have been doing this for a year. You know, I, I, I can, I personally, I cannot, listen, I'm as empathetic to the teachers that came public comment for what they said, you know, they're scared. No one wants anyone to get it. I, I just, the compromise is, is March 15th. It's, it's been over a year. I mean, you know, obviously I'll go with whatever the board decides, but on this amendment, I'm voting no. I'm voting yes on the original March 15th. You know, students need to go back. We're really talking about whether lunch is six feet versus 5.5 feet? Or five, you know, younger students, it doesn't spread. I mean, there's, there's data out there. I mean, we're not healthcare workers. We're here to educate students in the safest way possible. Pat has spent the last month and a half 24/7 devising this plan. I agree with Jennifer. Black Hawk Hour was, is ingenious. If we can get that back in, I'm all for it as well. I mean, you know, that's great. That was the most ingenious thing our high school's done in years. I think it's great. But I mean, this, you know, and to Howard's point, April 5th will become May 5th, will become never. You know, under, under 16 is not getting vaccinated anytime soon. Why don't we just go into 2023? I don't know what we're gonna do. I mean, it's been over a year. You know, and Jennifer, you're right. I've seen it too. Families are in disarray over this. So he's just saying nine days, that's nine days of additional disarray. We're families, online, God bless our teachers that try to do this. I couldn't do it. My kids 10 years ago couldn't do it. A lot of families can't do it. I'm just, I mean, again, I'll vote no for the amendment. I'll do whatever the, I'll support whatever the board ends up doing. I hope the board votes yes to March 15th. Pat, Pat, I'm just, again, I apologize, you know, I mean, Pat, do you have any comments? And then Siva?
I, yes. So clearly, as many of us noted earlier, COVID is here to stay. And the medical community has learned a lot to handle COVID over the last 12 months. Trends are continuing in a positive direction. They're trending downward, right? And so going back to my earlier point, Pat's looking at Oakland County data going through, ending Feb. 9th, and it was trending in a positive direction. And again, it's going to continue to improve over the next few weeks. Now let's understand that March 15th is four weeks from today, right? And April 5th is seven weeks from today. It's not a date around the corner. Like, like Paul, I, I'm gonna support, you know, 15 versus 5th, I'm not gonna quibble. But let's just keep in mind, you know, many 5th is, is seven weeks away. That's a long time for many families. That could be a lifetime for many families. So I just keep that in mind. But hey, I can compromise.
Thank you. And then one final point. We had a couple of, you know, there were concerns about whether we can get to six feet of lunch. We had four principals come on, you know, spur of the moment, and indicated we can make that work. I don't know what we're, you know, what else we can, what else Pat and his team can be doing. You know, I get it. I mean, it's, you know, we have to think kids first.
But I think, I think, I think the statement that was made is there's a possibility of these things being, being had. You can't sit in a restaurant right now and have lunch. So I mean, I get it, I understand, but at the same, at the same time, you know, individually, we have to make the decision that we feel is most appropriate for the entire district, not for a subset of individuals. And I think that the biggest point is I understand it is seven weeks away. And, you know, I will vote, you know, in support of what the team decides, but, you know, I think that we have to think about the entire district, which includes our people who are, you know, having to deliver classroom instruction. If they can't get access to a vaccination, and right now only 65% of our teachers have been vaccinated, we can't make any guarantees that a vaccination will be available for us to even be at 90%. We will be guessing. And if they can't get vaccinations, and they've had, they've had at least since, what, January to be vaccinated, and some of them haven't even had that, had a vaccination afforded to them or an appointment. I just don't want to take chances on individuals. That's just my, my opinion. I think the compromise that Howard is proposing is viable.
I just want to say, you know, I have been struggling with this for days, and Pat knows how much I appreciate all the time he's devoted to talking and my questions. And I know that, last conversation we had this afternoon, text, and he said, I asked him, which, was this risk worth it? I'm not an educator, and I want to take his recommendation, and he knows that, and I support him 100%. He said, and this is why I trust him, "You need to vote with what you think is right. It doesn't have to be in agreement with me. It's more important that you vote with what you think is right." And I so appreciate that advice. That's what makes me trust him. He's not telling me how to vote. He's telling me to vote with my conscience. My conscience says to trust him and to go with his plan, and I will. I think that compromise is extending it so teachers feel comfortable. I understand that the choices I would make for my own kids are totally irrelevant. The choices of people who I'm friends with and who I, totally irrelevant. It has to come down to the recommendation of someone who knows more about what to do than I do. And that person and that team is Pat, and I do trust him. This is not going against anything Pat recommends. This is asking for nine days, nine. It's been, if it's been a year in the scope of a year, nine more days so that we can have teachers enthusiastic about teaching and feeling safe. That, to me, my conscience of sending teachers back against their will to a place they don't feel safe, I can compromise with nine days if it means that they have more peace of mind. Absolutely. And still referring to Pat's plan, it doesn't change the plan or my confidence in Pat at all.
Any other comments? Siva?
We still need to figure out the issue of high school start times.
I think, I think it, the plan, from my understanding, is, and Pat, you can comment, if the plan, whether it's March 15th or April 5th, because of the busing schedule, Black Hawk Hour shifts from the beginning of the day to the end of the day. And then so we work out, and then, you know, an innovative plan on busing for maybe the high school? I don't know. I mean, again, that's, you know, that's not my area of expertise.
Aren't we considering high school start time for, I mean, that's still an issue, an open issue that we're considering for September 2021? That's not an issue for 2020, 21 school year. When you're back in person, there's a lot of issues. We're gonna address that over the next.
Point of, point of order. We're in discussion over the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? Not about start time? Okay, so we have, so now we're gonna vote on whether we're gonna amend it to April 5th. Going around, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
No.
No.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a no. Motion passes 4-3. So now we have the amended motion to vote on. Can we read the amended motion again, Howard?
Sure, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Education approve the April 5th return to school recommendation for K-8 as presented and modified by the administration.
Do you have support?
You don't need to do support. It's the motion on the table. We just need to vote.
Fine. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Siva?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes 7-0. We can go to B, Approval of Desktop Barriers Purchase. Can I get a motion? Siva?
I move that the Board of Education approve up to $150,000 for the purpose of desktop barriers as deemed necessary to be funded by the general fund and offset by any available state and federal funding.
Have support? Howard? A discussion? Any discussion? I don't think so. Howard?
Yes, I would like some discussion. We did talk about this a little bit of FFLA. If either, if Ms. Kostick or Pat Watson, Superintendent Watson would like to talk about it. I'm, I'm just wondering, well, we had this discussion at FFLA in terms of, are we, is $150,000 really, is the, are the, are the barriers really going to give us $150,000 with a health benefit? And I'm not sure. And I'd like to hear some expertise on it.
There's, unfortunately, there's not a lot of data right now that's out there about the use of barriers and what additional protection they may provide. But we're looking for some flexibility to buy additional plexiglass or additional barriers once we know what the needs are going to be, now that we need to, now that we knew, know the return to school plan, now that we have a date. So I don't foresee us using that amount of money. But we needed some flexibility as far as what we might need based on the needs we're going to have moving forward.
So the conversation we had at FFLA, which was just Siva, myself, and Paul, I could get behind the $150,000 as a authorization, but I'd really like the administration to come back to the board through the weekly update or some other sort of, you know, confirmation that we're just not throwing good money after bad and that there really is some data to back up that these actually will benefit the health of our students and our teachers. But without data and without support, I just don't want to have a feel-good, you know, that we buy these little barriers that then, you know, fall down off the desk and get all dirty and have to be sanitized and really don't give any health benefits. So I'd really like, I'll vote for it, yes, but I'd really like to have more analysis done before the expenditure is actually made.
Thanks, Howard. Any other comment?
With that caveat, I vote yes.
Yes.
Siva?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jonathan?
I agree with Howard's sentiment, but yes.
I'm a yes. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. We'll go to C, Approval of District Goal One. Do I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve District Goal One as presented.
Can we just show it? Read, I support, but could we show it and read it so that we all understand the small changes that were made between last time and this time? David, I think that's the next one.
Yep, sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Now and there, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Got it.
Someone read it? I don't.
Pat, can you remind us what we changed for this one? Or anybody, does anyone remember?
So the, the, one of the changes that was added to this is the connection of the two with the word additionally. So we're asking that not only that we allow for the budget to be adjusted to meet the needs of COVID impact across the district, we're also asking for the additional accommodations for the academic and social emotional needs of the students and staff that may be impacted by the two bullets listed after that. And John, what was, John and Pat, what was the other change that was made in the language?
I'm trying to think. I know we removed the verbiage about it being linked to, you know, goal number one or something, the strategic plan. I'm having a hard time seeing this.
Yeah, we, we unbolded some things. Try to find it.
I ask, was there any real material change or was it a lot of typographical type of changes?
Let's just read it and see if it makes sense. Is it okay if I read it?
Yeah.
Okay. "Support the superintendent and administration in adjusting the 2021-22 budget based on COVID impacts. Additionally, the district will build evidence-based supports for the academic and social emotional needs of students and staff impacted by COVID through multiple-tiered systems of support. Social-emotional learning strategies in curriculum and professional development around trauma-informed instructional practices." That's a fragment. There's no verb in that sentence. Okay, "Before July 1st, 2021, the superintendent will produce a budget that induces the adjustments needed to address the impacts of COVID-19 for the 2021-22 school year based upon information available at the time. By November of 2021, the superintendent will articulate a common vision for BHS social-emotional learning developed in collaboration with the SEL leadership team."
Jennifer, I think you said in the first bullet point, "induces" and it's "includes," but...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm...
So there's at least one verb in that sentence.
We're getting...
It seems too well right now. Thank you.
One of the things we took out, the second sentence, instead of, so it says additionally now. It said as informed by the data before. And the reason we did that was because the sentence then reads, "The district will build evidence-based support." So we thought that that was redundant, that we were informing ourselves by the data and doing it on an evidence basis. So we changed it to additionally so that it would kind of separate itself from that first. so that it would kind of separate itself from that first, uh, from that first sentence. Instead of making it two goals. Does that make sense?
Yep, and I misspoke. It's just a long sentence.
Same. Yeah, it is. The rest of that language is actually the exact same language.
Folks, I think we're just, we, there was a wordsmith thing. I think that's all we did. I think we should approve this as it is.
All right.
I agree.
Let's go, we have a, we have a motion and a second. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Shell?
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes, Siva?
Yes.
Motion passes, approval of both, board goal one. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve board goal one as presented.
Do we have support? Jennifer?
Yep, support.
Jennifer, support? Do we want to read it or?
Yeah, so I, if I remember correctly, the only thing we did to this is take out an actual date from 1B and, and add the words, David, you're giving me a seizure. Um, add the words in, in sequence. So by March, so it's A and B. A says by March 2021, complete and adopt DHS value statements, review mission and vision statements and consider potential updates. B, upon completion of board goal 1A, the team of eight will adopt strategic plan metrics and targets for goal areas, one, education, two, resources, three, workforce, four, and four, communications. The team of eight will craft new strategic plan goal area five, diversity, equity and inclusion with metrics and targets.
So it sounds like we will do 1B somewhere end of March into April and somewhere in that timeframe. Does that sound right, Jennifer?
Sure. If 1A says by March, then yeah, we would start that work when, whenever in March we're doing with 1A.
Got it, got it.
All right. We have a motion, second, uh, we'll vote. Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Siva?
Yes.
Okay, last but not least, 7-8, appointment of Oakland County School Board Association Government Relations Committee, district designee. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education appoint Howard Barron to serve as the Bloomfield Hills Schools Designee on the Oakland County School Board Association Government Relations Committee for 2021.
I support.
Yes.
I support.
Any discussion? Hey, Howard?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Glad that name got filled in.
Yeah, name wasn't gonna be sent there. It was gonna be in one of our names. Michelle?
Yes.
Siva?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion passes. Call for adjournment?
Please.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
Can I, can I just say, can I say one quick thing? I just want to, I just want to say that this is, this is so stressful and the community, I, I don't want to use the D word, divided, but every, everybody has so much stress and, and people have been, let's just say, pointing fingers at each other, at us. Um, it, it's, it's very sad. I, we are a community and this, this all stinks. And I just want us to, everybody who watches this board meeting to remember that. We all want the same thing. Thank you.
I second that.
Call for adjournment. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.